Okay, okay, Mr. Chairman, we are live.
The February eighth meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board is called to order at seven thirty one P M. We have the announcements, please.
Yes, number one on the agenda, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website. By sending a copy of the to the Echo Sentinel newspaper and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past ten thirty P M. At any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present. To extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Pledge of allegiance.
We all stand, please. First item on the roll call.
Yes, sir. Uh, Committee Man Ray.
Present.
Committee member Liza.
Present.
Miss Dill.
Here.
Mr. Hands.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones going to be tardy this evening, so we will, if somebody sees him before I call it out, please let me know later on in the meeting. Mr. Malinowski.
Here.
Mr. File.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Richardson.
Yes, here.
Chairman Sando.
Here.
Chairman, we have a court.
The first item on the agenda is a continuation of the hearing on a minor site plan for New Jersey American Water at their chimney rock pump station. And without further ado, I will turn the meeting over to their attorney. Ms. Segal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, my name is Victoria Segal with the law firm of Archer and Greiner on behalf of the applicant, New Jersey American Water Company. And this is in relation to property located at three forty two Valley Road. Also known as block ten nine ten lot twelve. Uh, the property is located in the B one twenty village business zone. As you may recall, the applicant appeared before this board on Tuesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty two. To request minor site plane approval, bulk variance approval. And if necessary, conditional use approval. For the replacement and upgrade of an existing six foot high fence surrounding the chimney rock pumps pump station. Uh, during the course of the public hearing, our licensed professional planner, Joe Mancini with Tri-State Engineering. Testified that the proposed development satisfied the conditional use standards for public utilities as set forth in the ordinance. In addition, Mr. Mancini testified to the positive and negative criteria. Which in his opinion justified the grant of the requested bulk variance to permit the fence. To be six feet in height around the entire pump station. When fences with within the front yards may be a maximum of four feet as required by ordinance. In response to the comments received at the January planning board hearing. The applicant is now proposing a revised six foot. High board on board fence enclosed enclosure for the chimney rock pump station. Rather than the vinyl coated chain link fence that was previously proposed. In addition, the six foot wide double swing gate is now proposed to be located. Adjacent to the southernmost parking spot. So as not to impact the existing ADA parking space in that same area. And which will provide adequate access to the pump station. Our witnesses tonight are Mike Nixon with Principal and Brian Slaughter with New Jersey American Water. Do you like to swear in our witnesses?
Sure.
Amanda, Amanda.
Sure, they would both raise the right hand. I see one, it's too perfect. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one exhibit tonight, it's exhibit A one, which will be the revised site plan. And uh, Mike, if you wanna bring that up for the board.
Sure.
And we can get started with your testimony.
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what's the date on these plans? The last revised.
January two thousand twenty two.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, Mike, I guess, should we have you uh, re- re- qualified for the board?
No?
No.
Okay. All right, Mike, can you just briefly reintroduce yourself in your connection with the property?
Yes, uh, Mike Nixon. Engineering consultant, professional engineer uh, for uh, Kleinfelder. Engineering consulting firm out of Princeton, New Jersey. Uh, we are assisting New Jersey American Water with uh, pump station upgrades. And specifically with the chimney rock pump station tonight, um, fencing.
Thanks, Mike. And just very, very briefly reorient the board with the property um, and the pump station, if you would.
Sure, uh, the pump station is located on Valley Road. Uh, adjacent to the chimney rock in restaurant. Um, it sits within uh, the entrance and the exit of the restaurant parking lot. On three sides. Um, and what was discussed last meeting was to completely enclose the uh, pump station. All four sides with um, a six foot fence. Um, within, as you can see. Zoomed in on the pump station. Um, it's simply a eleven foot by four inch by nineteen foot by ten inch. Footprint, very small pump station within the parking lot. Servicing um. The restaurant and about five other commer- mixed commercial residential homes in the area.
Can you just go over very quickly the equipment enclosed within the pump station?
Sure, uh, what's enclosed in the pump station or what it's comprised of is a wet well with two submersible pumps. Um, an emergency backup generator for emergency power. Uh, electrical control panel. Um, water service and uh, some piping and valving.
Can you go ahead and describe the new proposed fence material and uh, show the board what that will look like?
Uh, the new fence would match the existing fence in uh, style and um. Um, color, uh, it's simply a board on board or a shadow box fence. Uh, with a new gate as described uh, on the southernmost um, end of. Or parking space, the southernmost parking space along the pump station fence line.
Given the positioning of the equipment within the pump station. And the uh, close proximity of the exit drive to the left of the pump station. Can you confirm that the proposed location of the gate is the most practical solution in terms of. Providing access to the pump station and as well as for uh, public safety concerns?
Yes, um. The gate being located on the southern by the parking lot is the is probably the. The best location for um, operators visiting the station. Uh, their truck would be outside of any entrance or exit lane. And not on the shoulder of the county road um, for safety reasons. Um, any locate uh, locating a work truck in front of the station along Valley Road would block um. Site views for cars coming in and out of the parking lot. To the uh, on the north end. And uh, um, is additional parking, uh, some of it being handicap parking. Along with this um, space right here. Uh, would uh, hinder any um, handicap accessible parking to the restaurant. Um, on the west end uh, would be um. The exit lane and uh, would not wanna interfere with the traffic coming out of the parking lot. Blocking or congestion um, and causing a a site issue.
Okay. And um, can you just briefly describe the existing landscaping there in the front and confirm that there will be no. Uh, changes to those shrubberies in the front?
Right, uh, correct, uh, the existing planter in front along Valley Road is going to remain. The fencing in the front would go right up against it. Um, the only uh, landscape that is touched is the existing three uh, shrubs that are. Somewhat within the pump station and that's where the gate would be located.
Okay, thank you. That is uh, the main gist of our testimony. If the board wishes to hear more about the um, ADA compliance, we can provide testimony to that issue as well. Um, but for right now, we are open to hearing any questions from the board members.
Any member of the board have a question, raise a hand. Someone who objected to the location of the gate at the last meeting. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Go ahead, Doug.
Could we scan over to the, I believe it's to the plan, right to the detail? I'm a little confused as to the height. Because I see a ten foot indication on the fence detail.
That, yeah, that's a typo. I'm sorry about that. That should be six foot.
So, yeah, because it looks like you indicate six foot posts on the plan and then a ten foot.
Yeah, yes. Uh, sorry about that. Yeah, we can correct that and resubmit it for you guys.
Gotcha. Okay, and then the only other question back to that I have is back to that space. So is that a handicap space then you would occupy with your vehicle to park and service the pump station?
No, uh, this this spot right here is the handicap spot. Uh, the spot just the south of it is not a handicap spot, it's just a um, designated um, parking space.
It's not, so it's not a handicap space?
No.
Okay.
And I will confirm that that space at the closest to the curb is not marked as handicapped. It's white striped, it's just an ordinary parking space.
Great. Great, thank you.
Uh. Uh, David, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, Mike, and thanks for coming back so promptly with this, it's great. Um, with this new design. Last time you talked, it wasn't standard necessarily to do the plank on plank or this new. You say old style look. Is that concern gone away or is it never really a concern in the first place?
It was a little hard to hear your question, I'm sorry, um, the. Could you repeat it?
Yes, certainly, um. Last time you mentioned weren't thinking about doing this type of design for some standards or safety reasons. But i- is that issue being mitigated now? Are you comfortable with this proposed new design? What uh, wood on wood or plank on plank?
Was a security question, as I recall.
Yeah. I think we're comfortable with it to satisfy the the planning board's uh, concerns about aesthetics. Um, and uh, the, I think American Water was um. Went back, uh, Brian spoke with their security team and their security team was okay with going board on board.
Okay, so it didn't cause too many issues back at uh, back at the company, so. Appreciate you guys taking our concerns seriously.
Would you uh, scroll to the right? Scroll towards the left, show the right side of the screen where you got the picture of the of the existing board on board fence. Yeah, my question is, is are you going to build? An extension of that existing fence or are you going to replace the entire four sides?
We were gonna replace all four sides.
Okay, good, because that one is in fairly shabby condition.
Yeah.
Wow.
Uh, I, you'd mentioned taking out the three shrubs. Which uh, are in front of where the new gate will be. Those are actually the most mature trees on the site. I I assume that they are just going to disappear and that there can't be a replacement anywhere on the site.
No, I I don't think the room within the the station would uh, be able to handle um. Additional landscaping with the boundary of the easement, uh, considering that it's all paved parking lot. Um, the only area that you we could put new plantings is in uh, the planter in front of the station. And um, we consider keeping those bushes at uh, low, uh, not to cause any site issues with traffic.
Yeah, the the photograph you show in the upper right hand corner there. Um, is th- those look to be appropriate in terms of the site triangle issue. Although I must tell you, in February, those are awfully scrawny looking bushes. I don't know what you could do about that. The large, go back to the, go back to the site enclosure. In the. Southwest corner, you have an existing electrical box. That seems to be awfully large. Is that, is that just the electric service or is that a hot box?
That's the actual control panel and where the electric service comes in for all the equipment. So. Yeah, and it would ho- it would also house the switching for the generator.
Okay.
That's why, that's why the size is.
I know it is not your business, but if you look at the uh. Southeast corner of the planter, you'll see an existing water hydrant, that's a fire hydrant. It is completely surrounded by pavement and quite vulnerable to being hit by a truck. I know it's not your business, but do you know anybody at American Water who might wanna put bollards around that or something to protect it?
Um, I can pass it along.
It's it's uh, it it just seems like a safety hazard to have that sitting in the middle of pavement. The street pavement at this location extends all the way from the center line of the street. Right to up to that planter box and you, it's it's, there's no curb and there's no distinguishing of. What street pavement and what's parking pavement and that fire hydrant sits in the middle of pavement, it just seems to be hazard.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I can, I will pass it along to um, the team over in that in the Long Hill for the portable side.
Does anyone else on the board have a question for the applicant? We have one member of the public, one and only one, do you have a question?
And may the record show also that uh, Mr. Jones uh, joined to the meeting at seven fifty P M. Members of the public. Going once, going twice, no member of the public, Mr. Chairman?
All right, having no questions, I'm gonna allow Victoria to wrap up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in sum, this is a very uh, minor proposal for a six foot fence, which will provide adequate safety for. Um, the chimney rock pump station. Um, we very appreciate your time and um, thank you for letting us come back with our revised plans.
Uh, do we have any discussion from the members of the board? Does that mean that we're good to go?
Yeah, just a quick, just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I want to thank the applicant for listening to our concerns about the aesthetics on this project, greatly appreciated.
Of course.
Yeah.
I'd like to uh, add to that, I'm sorry it took us uh, so long to get to this point. Um. You guys have been very patient with us. Uh, Ms. Wolf, can we have the guts of a resolution, please?
Sure, so this would be a motion to approve a site plan application with a minor variance relief for the height of a fence for six feet where four feet is permitted. Um, the board has seen a sample of what the fence will look like, the board discussed landscaping, so this would just be a bulk variance that could be granted under C one or C two. I believe Ms. Segal said that their planner has already testified to those, so I won't go into that. And I don't know if there are any stipulated two conditions, I didn't see any in my notes.
No.
The fence will be, the fence will be brand new, replacing the existing.
Okay. Brand new.
With 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 the with the, I'm sorry, but with the, are we stipulating with the similar gray color, the driftwood color? Where where did we land on the color of the replaced fence? I'm guessing it will look like new. Okay. Everybody's fine with that, you know, the the gray is a little bit more subtle and in character with the with the whole chimney rock. Restaurant area, but but at this point, we'll move on. I didn't know if you had prescribed a specific color. Cause you showed us a black fence, which we reacted to with a chain link before.
Uh, it would, uh, I don't think we actually specified a color, uh, it would just be a stained board on board, so. Um, it could be a clear stained or um, any other uh, color, I guess.
Treat it so you don't have to come, treat it so you don't have to come back for many years.
Right, yes, that's the most important thing, so um, yeah, we can, we can make note of that.
Ask that the color be uh, blending in a natural color, so that way it doesn't.
Right.
Or Tom, I don't wanna see an orange fence.
Then that would be our motion, we would just need a majority to approve.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as uh, the attorney has stated it?
Still moved?
Second.
Okay. Uh, uh, Mr. File.
Yes.
Committee Man Ray.
Yes.
Committee member Liza.
Yes.
Miss Dill.
Yes.
Mr. Hands.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Uh, just a question, um, am I eligible since I missed the first part of this?
I would say no.
And I will abstain.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Sando?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for coming. We look forward to seeing this beautiful fence.
Thank you very much for your time.
We will uh, we will adopt the resolution. When at our next meeting, this one?
Yeah, I should, I should have it done by then and I will send a copy to Ms. Segal so she can review in advance.
Appreciate it, thank you very much, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Just don't, just don't paint it black, that's the only question.
Or orange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys from American Water can drop off and go enjoy your dinner. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our meeting on January twenty fifth and I assume by now you've all read those.
And I added Mr. Hands already, apology, Mr. Hands.
Thank you.
Where are you?
I'm at the very beginning. I didn't, I for sat, when I was rearranging the uh, members, I did not include Mr. Hands. Now he's included.
Oh, in the roll call of the meeting of the January twenty five.
Yes.
Well, he's on my copy.
He wasn't, that's odd.
That's odd. I I I don't see.
Hey, he wasn't on mine either, when I pulled, yeah.
Well, that's interesting, I have a copy that must be fresher than everybody else's. This is the copy that you mailed on Friday.
No, this is today's copy.
Yeah, I looked at today's.
Oh. Oh, yeah, right, I'm sorry, this is today's copy, they came out with the agenda, the revised agenda, okay. Does anyone have any comments on? Uh, the minutes?
No.
All right, a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty fifth meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
Approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
At this point, we are gonna hear a presentation from the. Newly appointed master plan committee and I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Richardson for that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm very pleased to uh, come back to everyone uh, as promised. Tonight to kind of go through an approach that uh, our committee developed. And uh, talk about the schedule with respect to the implementation, really a plan for the plan. Uh, I first, before I get into some of the details, I just wanted to re- refresh everyone's um, uh, memory. As well as just to provide kind of a basis for our approach. Uh, the first uh, condition that we really looked at was to look at this from first a macro. Perspective to get to the micro. The second is really to gain planning board approval at key milestones through this process. Whereby the subcommittee would largely take on this task, freeing up members to work on other productive things. During the year and then return back to the planning board. Uh, again, the key milestones that I'll I'll talk about briefly. Uh, to present and then gain approval uh, at those different junctures. Uh, the other condition was to really assimilate and build upon years of work in this process. Uh, and uh, the extensive public input that we already have. So our pledge here is really not to go back over ground that's been covered. To focus on uh, clearly some of the key uh, aspects of this plan. Uh, most definitely the land use element, the required element. And um, do this all in a cost effective approach where we maximize our volunteer efforts. But also utilize our board planning firm uh, to assist us. Uh, through this process where necessary. And then to complete this process by December twenty twenty two. So with that, let me just step you through and then I'll uh, look for questions and certainly uh, anything I missed from my esteemed committee. Members, but this process really is a three task process that we're gonna go through this year. The first task is to start by really finalizing the goals and objectives. The goals and objectives to a master plan are a critical portion of really the introduction to the master plan. So again, starting from the macro. And we're going to build upon really again, a lot of the goals and objectives that have already been. Uh, you know, published in draft or put into uh, different documents. We're gonna assimilate this all into a single document stripped down. So that we can all read the goals and objectives in in really one sweep. And not have it tucked in with uh, extensive amount of detail and formatting. So that stripped down document will be. Something that we'll work on in a fairly short uh, amount of time. In fact. We're really looking to come back uh, to the board with this. After the, the, the subcommittee uh, addresses and uh, refines these goals and objectives, we're going to come back to the board. Uh, most likely, uh, if we can. Whoops. The first presentation as an option uh, on March 8th. So we would need to look for uh, at least a portion of that meeting, if not the entire meeting. Focused on those goals and objectives. The more we can kind of dedicate our time to some of these, the better, but I recognize we have applicants that will need to service. Through the process.
My thumbs up for March 8th.
Okay. Great. And then what our, the plan would be is to return to finalize, hopefully. Um, if it's March 8th, we would set kind of a contingency date of, of uh, coming back. In that later meeting in March with the hope to complete task one of three by really the end of March. That would be our target date to have agreement and a vote on our, our goals and objectives. The second task, let me get through all the tasks and I'll entertain any questions. The second task would be to tackle now plan recommendations. The recommendations get into more specifics of really what the, each of the elements will be focusing on. It's a bit more extensive than typically our goals and objectives, as you can imagine, like a pyramid. We're, we're kind of starting from the top and, and going down and putting more meat on the bone, so to speak. That would commence then, you know, late March, but probably most likely April. And our, our goal would be really to come back with the first set of recommendations. Um, really in the May timeframe. And I envision, and uh, I think the subcommittee agrees that we would break these recommendations down and take either portions of meaning or whole meanings if we have. And tackle several of the elements where these recommendations fall. To again, gain approval of these recommendations as we go forward. And I'm envisioning that process to take up to from May to September. So it's a pretty extensive process in regards to getting really approval of the, that, that task to the recommendations. With again, the goal to really complete task two by that September timeframe. Uh, that leaves us with the bulk of the work, but after we really get through those tough issues, quite frankly, the rest flows. In theory, much more naturally. Because now we're really putting the real meat to support the recommendations. A lot of this has already been written. In fact, in many regards, we kind of started from the bottom and tried to work our way up. So we're kind of taking an opposite uh, approach to, to, to couple now the extensive amount of uh, work that's been done. Uh, get some help from our board planning firm uh, to help us assemble these documents in a very professional way. And, and really commence that process no later than October. With the hope to come back by early November to the planning board with a draft final document. And then use that, hopefully again, we've already agreed upon goals and objectives, recommendations. At that point, hopefully we're really just tweaking a few edits and we can then um, look to approve the plan. Final by certainly the 12, 13 um, date for the planning board before the holiday. So. With that, I did want to give the, the rest of my committee an opportunity to fill in where I may have left off in regards to just presenting the plan for the plan.
Thought that was fine. I thought you laid it out fine. Trust me.
Yeah, it's a great summary. Thank you.
Very good, Don.
Great.
And our meeting with Liz was a big help, you know, last week.
Yeah.
A lot of insight from her.
I think she'll be very helpful to the process and, and she largely has verified that this process has worked with a number of communities. So, questions from the rest of the board, please?
Don, thank you very much for uh, outlining um, the work that you're contemplating. Uh, just one question from me uh, at the moment is, you know. We all know this has been, this has been going on for some time and, and uh, I think uh, we're generally agreed that. Uh, the reason it's gone on for so long is because uh, you know, the, the master plan um, has uh. Uh, you know, I think the, the, the master plan becomes in people's minds, a vision of the community. Uh, and, and, and everybody has a different vision for the, for, for the community. And so, you know, we end up. Fighting through uh, a lot of the, a lot of the details. And so I would ask you. What is your uh, strategy to make sure that this doesn't happen this time around as I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm confident that it won't. But nevertheless, I'm still, I, I, I still think of history and, and uh, ask what the uh, what, what the plan would be to change it.
Yeah, I, yeah, again, I, I've, I've been in and out of the process, as I mentioned, and other um, uh, board members can chime in as well, but from what we've heard. I think what the key is, is not getting bogged down in a lot of the details. We're, we're talking about really developing a plan that is a 10 to 20 year. Planning horizon. And I think we attempt too much in, from what I've seen in this master plan compared to other plans in regards to the details. And what I mean by that is we need to reserve ordinance development to, to execute the details, not try to tackle. The, some of the specific things that need to be fixed with regards to zoning and other things that have more immediate issues. Um, to assist with both zoning applications as well as planning board applications. That really needs to be dedicated to ordinance. So I think from what I've seen, we've sometimes gotten bogged down way too much in those details. And we kind of lose uh, the forest and the trees, so to speak. Uh, and then the second thing too is it's up to us now, the planning board and the township committee representatives on the planning board. The, the, the public has spoken and has provided extensive input. Not that there won't be opportunities for public involvement, absolutely, as we approve these different plans. However, uh, I think, you know, we now, the leadership associated with the town and the planning board. It's time for us to, to rise up and, and, and put this plan together.
Thanks, Don. And, and you know, we've talked about it here. I think we're, I think, you know, as aligned, but, but it's one of the things that we will be tackling is uh, or. Uh, is, is looking at various ways of flood mitigation, right, in this and making some recommendations, which is, which is very timely and, and I look forward to. To uh, hearing the ideas and the recommendations.
Great. That's definitely front and center. We've, we've listened and we, we, I think that was a breakthrough comment. To, that we addressed before in regards to the, the stormwater related issues that we really need to, to tackle. So, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Yep. Anybody else?
I have heard. Some discussion about the extent of the master plan. Just to be clear, it, it's my belief that this master plan will be a 100% replacement. Of not only the 1997 master plan, but the six or eight or 10 elements that have been separately adopted since then. They will all be consolidated into one master plan. There will be no reference to a prior adopted. Uh, element, even if we simply copy that earlier element into this. But we will have one document. It will be pretty. It will fit on one CD or in a small comic book printed format. And uh, a, a, and we will completely lose all the piece parts. Now. The specific issue that has come up that I've heard is the housing element. Which was presumably adopted by the court or accepted by the court in the fair share settlement. Um, we need to have a dialogue between, a dialogue in public between the committee and the attorney. Perhaps both attorneys, the planner, perhaps both planners. Uh, as to whether or not we are at liberty to change the housing element to reflect reality. Specifically, one of the uh, one of the solutions in the housing element is the uh, redevelopment property at the corner of Maine and uh, Valley. And we've been told by the uh, DEP and by the redeveloper that that can't support housing. So.
Dennis, if I.
Need to make an adjustment somewhere.
Dennis, if I could interject, this actually was a, a, a discussion that I can report back from the master plan committee. And the recommendation uh, as it stands, and this comes also from uh, Ms. Lady, uh, our board planner. It has not been discussed, to my knowledge, with the board attorney is that we leave well enough alone, that actually we do not touch. Anything that's been in front of uh, fair share. We let them come back to us if they need an element. I know it sounds a little reactive, but right now I think there's potentially more danger in trying to. Rewrite something that already has been part of a settlement.
I would like to have that discussion at one of our meetings in public with, with one or both attorneys who have, who have been involved because.
I think that's.
I don't see any value in producing a plan that'll last 10 or 20 years that has obsolete information in it.
Your opinions.
No. So, uh, you know, that, that was my distinct recall, guys. Anybody else want to chime in on that particular issue on the housing element? But we addressed that in our meeting and we need to go from there.
I think the guidance was pretty clear. The guidance we got was pretty clear, in my opinion.
Right.
Yeah, uh, likewise, um, I think we just talked about maybe a reference in the. Introduction or separately in the master plan somewhere to recognize changes to certain things, but not open the master, the element.
Right.
For the record, I think that makes sense only because those are documents that have been reviewed by the court and they're subject to settlement agreements and there's been resolutions, I'm sure that involve them and adoption of them. And I just wouldn't want, there's something to go wrong and then undo everything we've accomplished so far. But we can have that discussion in public.
Thank you. Any other comments on Mr. Richardson's proposal?
I think uh, Mr. Jones has his hand up and has been patiently waiting. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand there. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, last year we were tasked with uh, reviewing several of the villages uh, from the master plan. Wasn't really clear exactly what was to come out of that. Uh, so wondering if you can get a little guidance. Do we continue with that effort? Do we park it? Um, but happy to hear your guidance. Thank you.
No, thank you for bringing that up. I would say for now, Mr. Jones, let's, we're, we're going to park that strategy. We're going to, we're going to let the subcommittee develop and work through the goals and objectives. Uh, that will certainly touch on these village areas most, most specifically. So those will be rolled up and you'll be seeing those and the recommendations coming out of that. Um, uh, step, that task. And then obviously into the next task, which building the recommendations around uh, those different um, uh, specific village areas.
You are still intending to discuss the recommendations separate and in advance of the complete document.
Correct. That's task two. Task two, think of it very clearly as task one is about goals and objectives. Task two is about the recommendations. And task three is really the drafting, the final drafting of the document. And we'll spend probably almost two thirds of our time on the recommendations.
Thank you. Any other questions about the work of the master plan committee?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a member of the public who has raised his hand and normally.
We have, we have an emeritus member of the planning board who has something to say. Let's put him on.
Okay. Mr. Rentschwitz. The board has so gr- has so graciously granted you the floor.
I appreciate the honor of allowing me to speak. I'm somewhat disappointed on the scheduled discussion tonight. For example. We spent a lot of money over the last nine years. With our consults on this master plan. Now we're going to get our planner involved. No discussion of the dollars. Number two. There's been no mention of any background studies that are required, recommended. Based upon the recommendation from the state planners that you do the studies before you write the master plan. There's no mention of any of the elements other than land use and affordable housing tonight. What are the other elements we've got? Under consideration. There was no mention in your schedule for public comment. Other than you think 420 surveys gives you a lot of input. I don't think so. If you're in year nine. Well, we're almost, I guess it's year 10. No mention of a contingency plan. Do we need to do a nether reexamination if you don't make it? And I believe. I've spoken, as some of you are aware, three times before Judge Michael Hebner on this settlement agreement. Given the fact that some of the properties that you selected and recommended to the township committee failed. You need to update that element. That will be a legal problem if you do not do that. I don't care what the attorney says. I will write Judge Hebner and recommend that he request it. You can comment on all my questions. Looking forward to your response and especially public input, which you made no mention of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rendowitz. Uh, Mr. Richardson, do you have any responses?
Well, I think uh, the first thing, Mr. Rendowitz uh, raises the public comment related issue. And at each stage, all of our deliberations will be uh, when we present from the subcommittee back to the board will be available and be part of a public hearing. Uh, the uh, so that really doesn't change with the ability to at least have some focused input from the public at each of those stages. My, my comment about building upon what we've done and to move this process along because we have a requirement to certify this plan. By no later than next year. Many of the members who have been on this committee for six plus years. Um, have made it their goal to complete this process within this year. Uh, and. It, I, the only way to be able to do that now is for the leadership of this board. Uh, who are appointed members as well as elected members. Uh, we have two from the township committee. To step up to assist us in, in navigating what needs to be done to complete this process. And that, that's really my only response to that. I can't comment on the settlement discussions. That would have to be. Ms. Wolf and others with regards to the issue that um, Chairman Sando brought up with the housing element. And, and how we navigate that.
I'd like to add a little to that. Uh, I understand. I'd like to add a little to that. I understand the concern about listening to the public. But if we go back to 2008 to the 2020 exercise and the several surveys that have been held since then, the open public meetings that have been held at the senior center, for example, and the recent survey of 400. We have that input. And there is probably not a need to repeat that input. Because as we have seen since 2014, we don't, we don't at this point need to schedule anything in this schedule that's going to lead to a delay in getting this done. We have the input. It will be respected. And there will be a hearing before any of the elements are adopted. And so I appreciate your concern, Mr. Rendowitz. We're going to do everything we can to get this done without losing the inputs that we already have. As you are probably aware, more than half the population of the township has turned over since the last master plan. And that trend is not going to stop. And if we if we continue to seek public input, we will continue to bring new people into the fray. We've got to produce a plan. It's got to be set in stone once in the 2023 so that we have guidance for the next 10 years as to how the town should evolve. And I understand, recognize that there will always be disagreement on that on what those elements are. But we're going to have to give it the best shot of the planning board. That's our job. Any other discussion about the master plan committee's schedule? Are there any other committees that would like to report? Does anyone have any old or new business to bring up?
Dennis, just on the point of, Dennis, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, David.
On the other committees, I think we're saying we're going to do them a bit more ad hoc. So again, I sort of may lean towards that to say, is anything the pipeline that the committee needs to form around, whether it be site plan or park type activities?
Nothing in the pipeline yet.
Okay, thanks.
At this point, I'm trying to get a little bit of organization around or the ordinance business. We've got quite a mountain of ordinances that have to be dealt with. And I'm trying to separate out those that can go forward without the master plan versus those issues that need settlement very soon. And I'd hope to have some sort of an outline of that and then look for volunteers to work on those ordinances sometime very soon. Although, obviously, it's not tonight. The other, the other committee issues that we have are the application review process. The only applications that we have in the pipeline right now are Elite and Parisian. Those have been reviewed to death. Waiting for them to come back. Elite is due to come back at our next meeting. And I look forward to that discussion. Parisian knows what they have to do and they have, they have some water issues that they have to redesign around. Deborah, after that, are we going to get the Elk's property application or not?
No, the Elk's property is definitely going to the zoning board, but you are getting a subdivision from Mr. Victor Releza that's coming to you in March as well.
All right, we're going to need an app. We're going to need a committee to review that.
Well, I just recent today, some revision, some revised plans were received, so I forwarded them to applicant. So I mean, to the professionals. So we'll have to discuss the timeline for that. Mr. Jones has his hands up.
Mr. Jones? Tom?
You're muted.
Thank you. Just to give you an update on ordinance. When we first met at the REORG, there was some ordinance being passed around, one being the drive through. Ms. Dill and I have taken it on and exchanged some emails back and forth with some ideas. So at some point, we will bring that to your attention following this meeting. But we have a couple more conversations taking place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dill.
Is there anything else in the pipeline, Deborah, that we haven't heard of?
Yes, you just got a new application this week for 57 Old Forge for subdivision.
That, we already did a park on that, did we not? Pre-application.
You did. Yes, you did.
Okay. How soon?
I would say, I mean, depending on the board's schedule, I honestly, I can't say yet. I'll have to wait until the end of February to see where Elite takes us. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, too, as far as the master plan schedule. So we'll know better at the end of February after the Elite meeting, what the calendar will start to look like.
Okay, is it complete?
I I literally just got on my desk, so have not even looked at it yet.
Okay, thank you. Any other old or new business?
So just so I'm clear, we have the the 8th of March available for our first goals and objectives.
Well, we have the Victor's subdivision scheduled for that day.
For the 8th of March.
Correct. We can definitely carve out some time if you wish.
And and I assume the the, it's a little tight, but the 22nd. You know, that that's going to be pretty tight for us for the master plan committee because the master plan committee needs some time.
Yeah, this March will be a little bit tough, only, you know, depending on how many, like I said, it will be able to better gauge at the end of February when Elite comes back. Because I'm assuming that the March 22nd will also be for Elite as well.
Got it. Okay, so I'll follow up with you, Deb, in regards to how we now take my broader schedule and shoehorn, try to reserve some dates to the best of our ability.
And I apologize to the to the committee, Don, for forgetting about you last week on Wednesday.
No, that's fine.
When I didn't join.
I'm just going to take it on. I have a Zoom account. I'll just navigate. I think Liz sent her Zoom account. So we 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 covered it. No problem.
She, I I don't know. I'm used to Tuesdays and Thursdays, so Wednesday completely slipped my mind.
Wednesday's your night off. Got it. Okay.
Does anyone have any additional motions that they would like to make at this time? And I'm looking at Mr. File. Who always has a motion at this point in the meeting. Turn your mic on.
Only turn it on if it's a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, that's right. Exactly what you
Alan, you've got to turn your microphone on.
All right. He's saying I'll speak for him. He wants a motion to adjourn.
I don't know how to put that in the minutes. He's going to have to ask for it itself.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good night.
Good. Good night, everyone.
Good night.